Good afternoon, this is an audio test. The work session will begin in a few minutes. Thank you.
So I can't see the -- oh, yes, I can see the program. I can see that people in the program.
Yes, we've got about five guests back here.
Great, I see Jason, I think I see Leah.
Yep, four guests and one contestant.
And the press.
That news -- and the press is here. That news guy just waved. Did you see that?
Yeah, it's pointing too much.
No, a bit well -- bit well through there.
A little bit further over, a little bit -- there you go.
There you go.
Hi, Gray. Hi, Gray. Hi, Gray.
Okay, we're on. I'll call the work session of the Neutrona County Commission together. It is July 28th and we are going to make an appointment to House District 59. We here a little few minutes ago, we put the names in a hat and drew out this order. First will be Leah Juarez, next will be David Carpenter, and our final candidate will be Kevin O'Hern. We are going to have them come up to the podium and then we'll ask them some questions and a statement from them and then roll through it. So first off, we have Leah Juarez. Would you like to come up to the podium or to the desk? Welcome, how are you?
Oh, you know, I'm pretty good today.
Good.
Good.
Good, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't you give us an opening statement and we'll ask you some questions. Then it will be time at the end for a closing statement and anything you'd like to tell us.
Okay, perfect. Well, initially I had ran for the district because I wanted to represent the people in my community. Hopefully you can hear that okay. Initially, I ran for the district because I wanted to represent the people in my community. You saw my name last year fighting for the Mills firefighters. What you didn't see was some behind-the-scenes stuff that I had done. And I firmly believe that we had more than enough money last year to pay the firefighters. And when I dug deeply into the budget, I found that not only was I correct, we had twice the amount of money allocated for the firefighters. And because of some of the cutbacks, we had actually saved a substantial amount to the department. And so it's -- that was, you know, a big eye-opening thing that I could not only help my community, but be effective and actually make change. And I wasn't even in a legislative seat at that point in time. So it really opened my eyes that there's more people that need help in my community and I'm fully capable of doing that now. And I want to step up to the plate and represent my neighbors as best I can.
Okay. Who has the first question?
I'm happy with you going through the four and then we'll follow up with anything else we think we need to.
There's a significant shortfall has been identified by the state for FY 2021. And Governor Gordon has made significant cuts. What are your thoughts on those current budget status and what, if any, needs to be done?
I -- so far, I agree with him. When I was in the -- worked for the city of Casper, we had one year we had to face a budget cut and we were told each department had to come up with 10%. And I felt that was the most fair way to do that because when you work inside the department, you are -- you're aware of the things that can be cut, the fat, for lack of a better word, that can be trimmed, the hours that can be cut back. And so I think that's fair to go to each department and say, "We need you guys to help us solve this problem." So far, it looks to be an okay answer, but it's not going to make many people happy. It's a tough decision and there's going to be a lot of public things that are going to suffer the next year or two at least because of these cuts. And so I think that that's going to be a tough challenge and you're going to have to be pretty firm in your standing when you support that decision as well.
Okay. Any follow-ups? In the recent legislative sessions, the $105 million over-the-top dollars for cities, towns, and counties has been much debated. Please tell us your position on this funding and how you believe it should be addressed in the future.
The $105 million, what's that coming from specifically?
It's coming right out of the general fund and they did a little bit of jockeying around last year, but...
Shoot, that's a tough situation. There are some cities that need substantially more money than other cities. Without throwing anybody under the bus, when I looked through the Mills department and the way that they were allocating the money that was given to them by the state, I didn't feel that it was appropriate and how they were allocating it. There was significant favoritism on certain departments and it wasn't allocated very intelligently. But I think that there are certain services that are necessary that the state should provide to each city, that the city can provide for the residents, such as the fire department. That's a necessary service and they're going to absolutely need funding from the state.
Okay. The Business Council and the State Land and Investment Board has been criticized for picking winners and losers. Do you agree with that assessment? Why or why not? And then what's your opinion of the Business Council?
Personally, I'm a support for the Business Council. I think that they stepped up when my business was shut down and provided a funding quicker than the federal government did and quicker than unemployment did. They did right by me and my business and my coworkers. You know, as far as favoritism goes, I don't outright see deliberate favoritism. I see intelligent investing and that might appear on the surface as favoritism. However, you have to give money to certain agencies that you believe are going to be the best investment for the state.
Do you support or oppose Medicaid expansion?
I oppose it because it's going to be a burden on us and if you -- so I think that most people don't understand, upfront, it looks fantastic. It looks like it's going to save the day for many older people and help cover expenses that aren't covered, but the burden 10 to 15 years from now that falls on us after the federal government cuts back on their assistance is not going to be able to be funded by us unless we come up with alternative revenue to fund that.
Do you support the stand-your-ground and the castle doctrine law?
I am a huge advocate for gun rights and gun ownership. I encourage my girls who work in the spa with me to carry and be able to defend themselves. Is, you know, and I just, I think that's so important for women, not only to defend yourself, but you know, if someone breaks into your home, you should be allowed to stand up for yourself without having to defend your right to save your own life.
What are your views on the creation of an income tax in the state of Wyoming? And where can the state look for an increase in revenues, if not increased tax?
I don't think that it's fair to put the burden on the people who are already burdened. I think there's much more intelligent ways to go about it. You know, there is a lot of things that came to light in my experience with my business. I am aware that there are certain laws that aren't being enforced because there's no way to enforce them. There's no penalty or fine or threat of jail if you don't follow through on statutes. Therefore, say for instance, my salon, someone can hurt somebody, someone can operate without a license and all we're going to do is go over and smack them on the wrist and say, "Please don't do that again." With that being said, so no on taxing individuals further, that's not fair, they're already burdened. People like me suffered substantially with the cutbacks. However, when you look into the things like the sales tax and you start to see where they're not able to enforce these people to pay their sales tax, that's a substantial amount of money that we're just throwing into the wind. We're just letting it go. I mean, we've got people in other countries who owe us tens of thousands. There's a couple people here, $200,000 that they owe us. And this is just sales tax that they can't enforce. You know, this is a huge revenue source that we're just letting go. But then when you think further, when I was last night at the Politics in the Park, there was a food truck there, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but they weren't applying sales tax to their service, to their food. And when you start to think about it and you think, "Oh, my gosh, there's so many businesses that aren't doing that that are supposed to be applying sales tax." And then I looked further and I thought, "Okay, how far, how deep does this go?" And I opened my phone and I'm not proud of it, but I order DoorDash quite frequently. And I had noticed that there was a price difference between what DoorDash charges me versus what the restaurant would have charged me. Now there's a 15 cent difference on sales tax that's not being given to the state of Wyoming. DoorDash doesn't have a sales tax vendor license. That's 15 cents, just one transaction, that they pocketed and didn't give to the state of Wyoming under the illusion that they were going to do that for sales tax. And it says right there, black and white, "Sales tax." So there's things like that that we're just turning away from because we can't enforce it. There's a ton of money there, a ton.
We're just zipping right through lots of questions. Let's see. What are your thoughts on Governor Gordon and the five top elected officials and the Occidental land purchase?
I've thought a lot about this one. And I've reached out to a lot of oil people. When I think about it as a private resident, I know that any land purchase, if I were to purchase land, doesn't go out of style and it doesn't devalue, it only increases in value. So I know that as an individual, that's a good investment. When I look at it as a business, it's a risk. You know, you don't know when or if you're going to get a return. I'm sure we will, but that's a pretty big investment upfront in the hopes that down the road, it'll return favorable for us. It's going to be a better investment than our securities are paying us our dividends as far as that goes. But I think it's a risk and I still, I support it, but I think it's a risk because at the end of the day, we keep finding ourselves in the same cycle of the downturn of oil and here we are scrambling to find how to pay our bills. And so although we should still pursue oil, that pays my bills in my house. My long-term partner has been in the oil field for 15 years. I think that we really need to make sure that if we're going to take a chunk of money and throw it at oil, we need to also pursue other revenue sources. We can't just hope that oil continues to sustain and do the same cycle over and over again.
What are your thoughts on charter schools? And do you believe it is right for local school districts to have the power of approval?
I support them. I think that parents should have the right to send their children to different educational opportunities. If the parents are going to pay out of pocket for those private schools for the children to attend, I don't think the state should have to fund that in any way. But I do think that they need to have a governing board. For instance, there needs to be a standard of education and we need to make sure those charter schools are meeting the standard of education.
Anyone else have any questions? Brooke, you're up there. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm muted or not. Hi, Leah. I know this is on, but thanks for coming. So one of the things that the chairman asked you was about the $105 million. And that's really what happened is the $105 was given to the local government when they did away with the food tax. And there's been a lot of discussion about bringing the food tax back. And I would be curious if that's something that you would support.
Specifically, the food tax, no. I think that it was a good decision to pull it back. The only way I'd be in support of putting it back in place is if we were to provide the low-income earners a rebate on their taxes so that they could offset the cost to charge. You know, that sales tax to them, to the single mother, is pretty substantial, but to me, it's not, so it's, you know, pennies in the hat to me. So I supported the notion initially when it was to help low-income people, but when we're looking at finding ways to fix the budget, it's worth looking into, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Explain what PILT is. Have you heard?
PILT? PILT, no.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay.
And, you know, it gives the county and the state a lot of money. Do you know anything about that yet?
You know, I don't. I'm not familiar with that specifically.
That's fair enough.
You know, I wanted to touch on going back, I guess, just my nerves get the best of me and stuff like this. You know, as far as alternate tax revenue goes, and when I saw Brooke's face, I remembered. I'm a huge supporter of tourism, which is funny that I would forget to say that. The reason why is because I think that, you know, five years ago, I wouldn't have known how that affected me as an individual, but as a business owner, when oil has hit another downturn, tourism kept my spa in business. And we had people coming from out of state who were, you know, utilizing my services as well as the girls in the spa. And we have people who are from other states who are buying gift certificates and giving them to people here locally. And it's been such a huge source for my business individually, as well as many of my clients, that I see how well it does just in Casper, that I know that it can be successful for the rest of Wyoming.
You mentioned the out-of-state and coming up to the spa. Was that the racers that came in or do you know?
Oh, gosh, we've had so many, and it's not even just around events either. It's people just coming through either on their way to Yellowstone or family events. I think the biggest, the busiest we ever were was Eclipse Week where we were booked solid. And then traditionally, NFR Week is just packed, solid, which I'm a huge supporter of NFR. I sat with them and helped them with their ticket sales and kind of reevaluate how they were making money and how they were losing money. So there's so many ways that tourism plays and it's not just around events. We, I really think that we need to make Casper, as well as Wyoming as a whole, a destination. Because when I go to Wisconsin and I see these travel brochures and how successful it is for this little town in Tipewa Falls, Wisconsin, who's been able to, and they were hit hard because they're not oil and gas. When the country is suffering, this little town of minimum wage workers is just decimated. And everybody across the board has two to three jobs. And so what they did was took this town and made it a tourism attraction and were hugely successful with it.
That's good. Did you have another question? We're just about done.
I have one question. So whoever we pick, we put in a very unique position because in three weeks, there's an election and whoever wins that election is going to be sworn in at the next legislative session. So we're being asked to almost pick a winner or loser and I guess my question comes down to what have you been doing for campaigning? If Bunkie were not there right now, or was still here, what are you doing to campaign that? I'm just trying to get some sense. I mean, we have three wonderful candidates.
Absolutely.
I'm just trying to, I don't want to, I feel very uncomfortable, us being asked to pick a winner when in three weeks, the voters are going to pick that person.
And I completely emphasize with that because it's just like, how do you guys predict the future essentially? And how do you guys know what's best for my district when I'm supposed to know what's best for my district? You know, and Dave and Kevin are both fantastic candidates and, but they're fantastic individually, on specific areas, just the same as I am. You know, Dave's really knowledgeable in oil and gas, whereas Kevin's really knowledgeable in city and budgeting. And I'm really knowledgeable in business and statutes and laws. As far as campaigning goes, I have sent out postcards. I've been really hitting hard with the social media. I've found huge success with that in my business. And so I found that's the best way to meet people inside their home and get them a piece of who I am as most effectively without being invasive. Times have changed a little bit where 20 years ago, we could go door-to-door and knock. Obviously, we can't do that with COVID, it's a little frowned upon. But the same token, homeowners don't feel the same way, the door isn't always open. So you have to find a different way to find the people who are going to vote for you. And so I have done a few events and I've, you know, Politics in the Park is a fantastic one as well, sending out brochures, social media posts, and then, you know, just talking with some people. We're going to most likely run some radio ads as well to, I did canvas my local neighborhood or on my house, a couple of blocks around there, as well as the neighborhood around my business. That was more so because my, what I'm doing with my business, I'm renovating a building that was, it was pretty much supposed to be condemned and knocked down. I bought the land, the building was not supposed to be structurally intact. I went in and saved it. And so I wanted the neighborhood to know that the money that I'm putting into their neighborhood is because I believe the neighborhood as a whole to be the best opportunity for my business because it's family-driven, it's easy to get to, right off a CI. And I want that community to understand, I picked that area because of how fantastic it is all the way around. And so those are some of the unique ways that I've campaigned.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else with a following-up question? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Okay.
I'll go after four.
So, and this has to do with the state and county relationship. What do you see as the most important issue or issues locally?
You know, that's, I mean, obviously getting people back to work.
And putting budget aside.
Yeah. You know, we have a lot of projects that we're working on as far as building new projects, growing our communities, you know, and Mills, they're trying to do a riverfront project and that's going to help the community tremendously. So it's relationships like that where the mayor of Mills needs a good, healthy relationship with the legislator, which was Bunkie, is technically still. Because he needs the help from him to be able to get that funding, to fund that riverfront project, which I completely support. I think it's a fantastic idea. So things like that need to play hand in hand and you need to be able to work together to build those relationships to help not only just my neighborhood, my community, but Casper as a whole and Neutrona County as a whole. So I don't just represent 59, I would represent Neutrona County as well. So those relationships are very important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Brooke?
So Leah, this is a question, I get this a lot as a commissioner. How do you have time to do all this? How do you have time to be a business owner and somebody who's in a long-term partnership and be in Cheyenne 30 to 60 days a year and be on the road, you know, for all the interim committee meetings? Talk to me about how you'll approach that and how, like, how you feel about that.
You know, it's hard for me to explain, but if you would ask somebody around me, they'd be easy, they'd easily articulate it. I'm a huge proponent in utilizing technology. Technology has helped me become so efficient in what I do, where I can reach out and communicate with people on multiple avenues. I can have a meeting with somebody who's not in the town right now on a computer, which saves me a tremendous amount of time. You know, I don't have to drive down to Cheyenne to have a conversation with you. So things like that help whittle away some time, to save some time. I've been a long-term night owl, so if you get an email from me at 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning, that's pretty normal. I don't expect a response, but that's pretty normal for me. As far as the business goes, I have an amazing team around me who have taken the reins and a really intelligent spa manager who's been able to take over my day-to-day operation at the business and handle it flawlessly. So that burden has been lifted off my shoulders. As far as the long-term relationship, he's such a huge supporter of all of this and the poor guy being drug around, hanging up campaign signs and all that, but he's all for it. And it's people like that that surround me that help make me successful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a closing statement that, or want to tell us something we didn't ask you?
You know, I don't, specifically nothing that we didn't touch on, but like I said earlier, what a tough decision you guys have because you're essentially trying to forecast the future of what the voters want. In Bunkie's shoes, are huge shoes to fill. He was on pretty important committees. I did a lot of research on the minutes and, you know, everything that he was pursuing. And he did a lot of good things and a lot of hard work and so I don't envy your guys' decision at all, but I highly respect whatever outcome this is. But I want you to know that even if I might not understand what the PILT is, you had better believe a second I walk out that door, I'm going to be looking it up.
That's great.
Because I'm going to know that answer next time. Because the only way that I can resolve an issue is if I understand it. And I'm not the kind of person that's going to buffalo my way through it with the Mills stuff. I can show you. Before I tackled the Mills budget, you know, I was a little bit familiar with budgets as far as the city goes with Casper, but, and then, you know, budgets as far as corporate and federal and working for the airlines. But I needed to understand why it was we were going to defund the department. And the only way I could do that is to understand what happened to lead up to that. And that meant going line by line through the budget to understand how everything broke down and what some of the missteps were that Mills may have done and how we could correct them. And so I spent a long time.
We're getting close to the end of the time, so...
Okay. That's just the printed copies of what I did for the fire department. I didn't know how to do that job before I started, but I know that's like the back of my hand now. This is how I approach everything. If I don't know it, I'm going to learn it and I'm going to be the best at it because it's a personal challenge to me. So I want you to know that I will take every opportunity I can to be the best representation, not only of your decision, but of District 59 if the voters choose to vote me in on August 18th as well. Thank you so much for your time and Brooke as well. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for putting your name in and thanks for running.
Yeah.
You know, no matter how it works out today, you're still a candidate and that, we need good candidates.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
You know, off the subject, I am a little bit disappointed that I'm running against Kevin and David because they're fantastic. And like I told the both of them, if I didn't have to vote for myself, I would most likely vote for one of them.
Okay.
So they're both great guys, too.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
I'll bet when you walk out, somebody will, I think they'll be in. Okay, thank you. That'll help. Could you check Jim and see that Michelle's out there and saw that we need the next person is David Carpenter?
That was good. I didn't know how you approached that last question, so that's perfect. So the one about the county commission, I think you brought some of the fault log right here. I kind of felt like you didn't want to have, I think it's more from the perspective of the representative legislature than down there, but you worded that better than, yeah. No, that's good.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, there's the hot seat right there.
All right.
We've got a... We've got about 30 minutes and we'll ask you some questions. And do you have an introduction and kind of an introduction photograph for us?
Yeah. It's a little bit off topic, but.
Get right up next to the mic.
Okay. One of the more fascinating aspects to working in the land services industry is the history that lives within, within our public records. Not only can you see the history of a single tract of land from patent to present, but these records can also reflect what is happening in our state at any point in time. You can witness the rise of some of our state's most influential people, including Francis E. Warren, John B. Kendrick, and Alexander Swan. The tensions that stem from water and property rights disputes that culminated in the infamous Johnson County War, you can actually feel the impact that the Great Depression, the falling demand of oil in the 1980s, and the mortgage crisis of the late 2000s have had on our people. I believe we may be living in one of these moments right now. The property tax issue affecting our local community has nothing to do with the nominal increase in taxes, but rather demonstrates a much larger concern regarding government accountability and transparency. These highlights, this highlights issues affecting our entire state, but the difference between Natchitoches County and the other 22 counties in Wyoming is that their assessor has shown the ability to listen and work with their people. I will not tolerate an elected official abusing his duty as a servant of the people. I will not allow an elected official to forcefully remove hardworking people from their homes, stripping them of the very assets they worked their entire lives to earn. There are people that are depending on me, and I promise with or without your support today, I will continue to lead this fight. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we've got quite a few questions, and these guys have a few. A significant shortfall has been identified by the state for the FY '21 budget. Governor Gordon has made significance cuts. What are your thoughts on the budget, current budget status, and what, if anything, needs to be done?
Well, I think we all know that we are heavily relying on energy as one of our major sources of revenue. It funds almost the entire education budget and a good portion of the general, general budget. You know, I think, I think it's going to be a very complex issue. There's not going to be a, a single good answer to this question. What I want to focus on is public and private relationships and partnerships moving forward, that we can develop our infrastructure and make it, build a stronger foundation for our business community. Some of the things that I would like to discuss further and move forward with are, you know, the expansion of broadband, which I think you're doing right now, and just building into that infrastructure a little bit further. Blockchain is an interesting concept that we've started to move forward with, and, and this state has actually done a fantastic job to this point. So I think, I think some of those things on infrastructure-related topics, you know, I think they're going to be a big deal moving forward, and it's going to involve everyone. It's going to be public, it's going to be private, and we're going to have to all get together and work, work through this. With that said, there's a lot of issues right now in, in terms of diversification of the tax structure as well, and we're going to have to address it, whether we like it or not. I know, I mean, I'm standing here as someone that's, that's advocating on behalf of the people for taxes right now, for lower taxes right now. But we're going to have to address some things. And, you know, whether that's a corporate income tax or whether, whether it's sales tax or any of these other things, we're going to have to find ways to get revenue. And just, just improving our industries is, is not going to work. It'll create jobs, but, but we're going to need more revenue.
Okay. So where's my new tax question while you talked about that? You know, you stated that we need to look at maybe income tax, maybe whatever, creation of income tax for the state of Wyoming. Where can the state look for those increases in taxes if it's not new taxes?
If it's not new taxes? Well, it's not going to be in the energy industry at the moment, but honestly, right now, I mean, the, the easiest solution is, is probably to increase the sales tax slightly. With that said, I don't, I don't want to see that personally, but, you know, this is, this is kind of unprecedented times right now, and we have to, everything needs to be on the table. You know, there's, there's certain ideas out there right now, maybe the expanded of gaming. I think there's, I think there's still more to be done there. And that's, you know, that's a taxable market that we have right now. The lottery has brought in some decent revenue. Some of our, our horse track and, and other, other gaming is, you know, it's bringing in revenue. And, and I think there's more room to expand on that. As far as other taxes right now, without implementing new ones, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head.
Okay. In recent legislative sessions, the 105 over the cap dollars for cities, towns, and counties has been much debated. Please tell us your position on these funds and how you believe it should be addressed in the future. The 105 million.
Would you mind stating that question one more time?
It's, the recent legislative sessions, they, they give us out of the general fund 105 million, and that's split up between the cities, towns, and counties in Wyoming. And it's been much debated in legislature. Please tell us your position of this funding and how you believe it should be addressed in the future.
You know, I think, I think you have to, have to at least have some sort of population in, in there to account for the larger cities and the more infrastructure in some of these larger cities. But we can't look past some of these smaller communities because they're going to need, you know, probably more than what they, what their population accounts for right now. They're rural, you know, even with the broadband thing, you know, we need to be able to give those people access to, to some of the services that we kind of take for granted in some of these bigger cities. And so I think, you know, while it's a fine line, I think there needs to be some mechanism in place that allows for some of those smaller counties to, to maybe get a little bit more than what their population says.
Okay. The Business Council and the State Land and Investment Board has been criticized for picking winners and losers. Do you agree with that assessment? Why or why not? And what's your opinion on the Business Council?
I think, I think the Business Council is, has been put into a tough position right now. They've had to make some decisions lately that have been, you know, pretty significant. And, and there's a lot of, everything is moving really quickly in terms of the money right now with COVID. So as far as picking winners and losers, I am completely against that on the local level, on the state level, on the federal level. I've never been an advocate for, for picking winners or losers, and I think it happens far more often than, than anybody would like. As far as state lands go, you know, I don't, I guess I don't know the particular situation on that, although I, I follow the State Lands Office pretty well, pretty closely. You know, I think, I think there's some things that need to be worked out in that office in general, particularly on the energy side. They've, they've kind of started to take this position that is a lot, a lot less flexible in terms of energy opportunity and being able to really grow as a state, which is important, especially the energy side. And, you know, I'd, I'd really like to take a look at State Lands and, and try to get them refocused.
Okay. Do you support or oppose Medicaid expansion?
I'm more of a proponent of allowing people to be able to, to work themselves out of their issues and their troubles. But we can't leave anyone behind. So if there's, if there's a shortfall in, in Medicaid right now, then it should be addressed. But I would, I would never be a proponent of dependency, I guess is the best way to say it.
Okay. Do you support stand your ground legislation in the castle doctrine laws?
Yes, I do.
Okay. What are your, what are your thoughts on, on Governor Gordon's and the five elected officials in the Occidental land purchase?
That's a really big purchase. The optics are probably the biggest issue with it right now. You know, we're, we're talking about budget shortfalls. We're talking about cutting different, different services. And we're also talking about spending a billion dollars on, on something that a lot of people in this state can't really wrap their minds around. For me, from a land perspective, the, and I'm going to kind of focus on Laramie County for this one. But in Laramie County, and this is kind of what got us started down this drilling spacing unit and permitting issue down at the, at the commission. But, you know, Anna Darko was able to essentially put together 1280 DSUs on just about everything they owned in Laramie County, which had a significant impact on the private owners and the even sections. It, it didn't allow them to be able to develop their minerals properly. It didn't allow them to be able to create their own market or get market price for their leases. And I think, you know, you see it in this class action lawsuit that I, I believe is still ongoing. I think, I think there's a number of good assets. I think there's, it's a great opportunity as an investment, and I think it would allow a lot more competition in the oil and gas industry and in other mineral extraction, extraction industries as well. But again, the optics are, you know, not good right now. But generally speaking, I'm in support of it.
Okay. What are your thoughts on charter schools? And do you believe in the right of local school boards and districts to have power of approval?
I believe that local government should be the first, the first government. It's, it's the one that's within arms' reach of, of the people. It's the one that can, we can reach to and, and call out for and ask for help. And so, in my opinion, I believe that local, local authority is, is best to an extent. I think there should be oversight on the state level. With that said, I am a strong advocate for charter schools. I am a strong freedom of choice, freedom of choosing your own school. And, yeah, that's kind of where I stand there.
Okay. Brooke, did you have a question? Are, are you there?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you. I just had to unmute. I've got a lot going on here right this second. So David, one of the questions that I have for you, so I know that we, I feel like we're, we kind of dug in a little bit on the revenue diversification opportunities. And one of the things, I couldn't tell you for how many number of years now, the state government gives 105 million dollars to local governments, to city and county governments. Originally, when that was set up, that drag distribution, it was because the state legislature voted to remove food, the sales tax on food. So that's obviously been back in the discussion with, you know, having to figure out where we go from here, how do we drive revenue? I would be curious if you would be supportive of the food tax or not?
I'm not. I'm not in support of the food tax. I would rather keep that off the table and maybe raise it another percent, honestly, because I, I believe that's going to have a negative effect on the lower-income people in our communities, more so than others. You know, if it was, if it was just restaurants, then maybe I'd be in support of it. But if it was groceries as well, I would not be in support of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Forrest, did you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are a lot of issues facing the county, as well as the state. Putting budget aside, what do you believe tho, those issues are, those current issues that are facing the state and the county?
From an energy perspective, it's, it's mostly the regulations in general and the tax, the tax burden on the industry, because it's so, so heavily weighed towards energy right now that, you know, there, there's not a lot of wiggle room for them anymore. And part of the problem with that is actually our federal public lands. And, you know, that's, that's kind of its own battle, and it's not anything that we really have too much of an ability to work with. You know, we can try to work with the feds as much as possible and try to get their cooperation on, on a number of different things. But, you know, the waiting periods for, for some of these permitting processes, even on just general infrastructure, let alone energy, the environmental permitting and, and the, the studies that we have to go through on it, I think are a major problem for, for our state, especially considering we're, you know, 65% BLM federal lands. And so, so that's kind of a big issue for me, is, is how are we going to navigate this public land issue without giving up our public lands themselves? Because I think that's, that's important to our tourism industry. It's important to our hunters and fishermen. But we have to be able to, to at least try to regain some control over the public lands, or at least develop a good working relationship with the federal government on that issue. As far as other issues right now, not concerning budget, you know, I think, I think one thing that, that I've seen and that has been very clear to me through this whole COVID-19 pandemic is, is there's, there's some shortcomings to our education system. And I don't know that, you know, we're going to have the ability to work on it as much as we'd like to right now, but I think, I think there's, there's ways that we need to start implementing technology into education. And, and we could see that as, as being a major problem right out of the gates with coronavirus. And, and it should be something that moving forward, I think it'll help rural schools. I think it'll help, you know, our rural populations to be able to, to kind of keep up with some of our bigger cities if we can, if we can develop that technology. And, and part of it's broadband, you know, bringing broadband to rural areas. Part of it is just developing some sort of technology structure that we can utilize for our school systems.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm, I'm going to yield this next question to Jim because he wrote it.
Who?
Phil.
Oh. Well, I asked it last time. I was happy with that.
Basically, do you know Pilt, payment in lieu of taxes, right?
Say that again?
Pilt?
Pilt, okay.
Payment in lieu of taxes. And you're kind of talking about that a little bit with federal lands. Can you explain if you know what it is or what you know of it, along with its pros and cons, how it affects the counties and the state?
I wish I would be able to have a clearer picture on that. It's something I'm going to have to look into a little bit more. Yeah, I, I don't know that I could properly answer that question right now.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In three weeks, there's an election, and the people are going to speak. So we're put in a rather unique situation of trying to either guesstimate or put our two cents in. Out of curiosity, what are you doing to, as far as prepping for this primary coming up, as far as campaigning?
Coronavirus has, has put a, a twist on, on the whole situation as far as all of us go. We're, none of us are, none of us have done this before. And I know even the, even the ones, I've talked to Cindy Loomis about this, and, you know, she, she's struggling with this, this entire concept of how, how we approach this. Because you really, you have to be very careful about getting in front of people right now. And, you know, everybody's a little bit different in how they feel about this thing, and you have to respect that. I don't want to tell all my secrets, but one of the things that I've done is, is tried to do a lot of direct mailings out to all my constituents. I've tried to focus on social media. And, you know, another, another thing that's really kind of helped me along is, is this entire property tax issue where I've, I've kind of had to rise up and, and become a leader and try to get people organized. And, and that's kind of brought me out into the light and, and brought me in front of people more often than, than I would have otherwise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brooke, I think you had one about. Brooke, I think you had one about management?
Yeah, I do, so I just, were you in our work session last week?
I was not.
Okay, somebody sat in the corner in our work session, I think it was to learn more about what was going on from the commission perspective with the stuff that's going on with the assessor, and I'm like, that wasn't you, was it?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, just checking. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, so thank you. So my last question would be, and I get this a lot as somebody who was appointed to the commission, obviously in a situation where I'm campaigning as well, but Brooke, how do you have time to do this? You have a full-time job, the commission is almost a full-time job, you have a life, you have these things, like how do you manage your time, or how are you going to do this? And I would ask the same to you.
That is a very fair question. You know, I guess, basically what we've done as a company, and I'm a partner in Pacer Energy, and my two partners, one of them is in Gillette, the other one is down in Cheyenne, and so we actually have three offices, we have the one here in Casper, and then also Gillette and Cheyenne. And so we've kind of become pretty familiar with the digital world and how to navigate through that, which allows me to work from home, it allows me to work at the office, and it allows me to work on the road. You know, I've definitely got a lot on my plate, I'm actually the chairman of Technology for the American Association of Professional Landmen right now, and we're working on blockchain issues and a number of different things. I also sit on the committee for AAPL, on the accreditation committee, as liaison to the School of Energy Resources PLM program. And then I have two kids, four and five and a half, and it's a lot, but I would have never put myself in this position if I didn't think I could handle it. You know, I think there's some things that I need to work on, and I probably need to get better with my planner and have a better relationship with, you know, maybe a planning software application, or even just a daily planner to kind of get through this, but I'm kind of a 24/7 type of guy. You know, I want to be, I am motivated, you know, and I want to be challenged at all times.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we're getting down to about the end, do you have a closing statement, or anything that we didn't ask you that you were preparing for, just for a few minutes?
Well, let me kind of pick through these notes here and see if there's anything. I guess what I've been focused on as far as preparing for today, especially in front of you guys, is just taking a look at the working bills right now and seeing what we would need to be working on if I was selected today. And, you know, a lot of it's going to deal with coronavirus, you know, you have the COVID-19 Tourism Sector Relief Bill, that I think there's going to be some tweaks involved in that before that thing gets voted on. Another one that I've mentioned in the past is the Public Health Emergencies and Immunities, and I think that's a major thing that we need to take care of, that'll protect our people and our businesses and our schools, and allow some of that liability to get off of them on this thing. A couple of other things I'd like to focus on, is, you know, when I arrive in Cheyenne, is, you know, and I mentioned this before, is the broadband enhancement, I want to continue to work forward on that, I think that's a major deal for us. I think the blockchain thing right now with Avanti and Medici up in Teton County, I think there's some big things there, I think there's a lot of opportunities, I'm still trying to completely wrap my mind around it, because it's a very unique concept. Other things that I'd like to look at are more, you know, more development in carbon capture, and really start to try to promote our data centers and, you know, our ability to create supercomputers and some of these research facilities, and I think a lot of that comes in trying to continue and expand on these public and private partnerships, which I think are going to be huge moving forward.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to have Will Knoll here in another hour or so, and we'll come up here, we'll probably have an exec session and come up here and talk about it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you much for your time.
Thank you. Do you have a need for another executive session later on?
Yeah, I was, I'll approach that later, but I think when we're done here, we might move downstairs, so I can gather instead of for the TV, but yeah, we need some time.
Okay, good. We'll go down and talk about it. Did you, was she coming before, he might?
She is.
Hi.
Nobody says a good man sit down.
Yep.
You can always draw on.
Does the lot seat up here?
Yes, sir, it is. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to ask you for kind of an opening statement, introduce yourself, and then we'll ask you some questions.
How long do I have?
Thirty minutes, total.
Okay.
So, don't take too much talking, we've got to answer some questions.
I'd like to reply, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet.
I'm Kevin O'Hern, I haven't met some of you guys, specifically Jim, I think. I talked to some of you, and Brooke, I don't know where she's at. Worked with you guys in the past, I would like to hit the ground running, I've talked with Bunkie a couple of times, and he told me what his committees were on, and I'd like to take over, I feel I'm best qualified to do that, or I wouldn't be sitting here today. I've learned a lot on the campaign trail, talked to some people, and I've watched some Zoom meetings on the committees, and learned a lot. Haven't done this before, served in the military for 31 years, have briefed generals and enlisted alike, so we all put our pants on the same way. I want to be transparent, let the public know what's going on, and make sound and timely My three priorities are learn from veteran legislators, learn and listen, see what's going on, study the information given concerning each topic, talk to subject matter experts in those fields, and then make sound, timely decisions based on past, present, and future. What's that going to do to the economy, to the people, to the constituents back here in Wyoming, and keep this a great state? Was in the military 31 years, fought with a flag on my shoulder, and I do not like where the state, or the federal government, the United States is heading. And I didn't lose a bet, I didn't, you know, one of the guys said right after I announced it, "Did you lose a bet?", and I said, "No, I can do it, I'm old enough and got enough common sense, I'm tired of seeing what's going on around the world and around this state, and I want to make a difference." So here I am.
Significant shortfall has been identified by the state for the FY '21 budget, and the Governor Gordon has made significant cuts. What are your thought on those cuts, on the current budget status, and what, if anything, needs to be done?
Well, I was at Politics in the Park last night, and I heard one of the gentlemen up on stage, I think it was Jim Anderson, say that the largest school district gets the $1.9 million, or billion dollars, of the state budget, and followed closely with 1.7 of the Health Department. And those have both been asked to cut, I think it was 80 million, I don't know if that's out of both budgets or just one. There's going to be some tough decisions to make. I talked to Art Washit before I decided to run, he goes, "We all felt like Santa Claus two years ago, now we're going to feel like the Grinch." Budget cuts need to be made, we need to look at all the data, see where cuts can be made that affect everybody, not just one portion or one section of the economy, or of the economic drivers within the state. Going to be some tough decisions to make, I can't make any of them without that data in front of me, I don't think any of us can. Bottom line, don't know. COVID-19 and the recession with the oil, nobody knows what's coming in, the revenue's coming in, and it's going to be a tough road to hoe either way we go. So, if somebody could give you the magic number that says, "This is what the state's going to have," I think they'd be kidding you. We have some in reserve, like Charles Scott mentioned last night, I've looked at some of the accounting numbers, or joint appropriations from the legislative, the LSRA or something like that, Legislative State Reserve Account, and Charles Scott says, glad we have that, state made some sound financial decisions in establishing that. We hope we don't get into it too deep, but some cuts are going to have to be made.
Okay. In recent legislative sessions, the $105 million over the cap dollars for cities, towns, and counties has been much debated. Please tell us your position on this funding and how you believe it should be addressed in the future.
The $105 million of the state's budget is directed to go where?
To cities, towns, and counties.
Okay. If it's based on population, I would assume that's how it's based.
Lot of different things.
You'd have to make sure it's fairly distributed, it would also make sense to look at the communities that were the hardest hit, and allocate those funds to those places that meet the needs of the people of Wyoming, in the best ways, not just in Endurock County, not in Teton County, or whatever county thinks they need it the most, or who has the loudest voice, or the squeakiest wheel. You need to look at all those different places that that $105 million can go, and you need to spend it wisely. And I've run a small business since 1984, and I've raised six kids, and if you have $100 coming in, you better not be outspending $200, you've got to live within your budget. And each community, each municipality within the state needs to show where that money is going, and make sound financial decisions on how it should be spent.
Okay. The Wyoming Business Council and the State Land and Investment Board has been criticized for picking winners and losers. Do you agree with that assessment, and why or why not, and what's your opinion of the Business Council, Wyoming Business Council?
I've worked with the Business Council, and I wanted to work more with the SLIB last year on getting the AML grant. I think the, Kim Reitmer is still with the Wyoming Business Council, I believe, she has always worked hard for the Town of Mills in the capacity that I know. She has led us towards some grant opportunities, and has given us sound decisions, I believe, on how we can get good grants and stuff like that. I think the SLIB, I wish I would have entertained getting them involved on the AML grant that we went to DC to try and pitch for. I think if we would have gotten the SLIB there earlier and them involved. Again, I don't know how much the Wyoming Business Council and the SLIB has been good or bad for the state, I hear they have money that they haven't spent. I wish they would have told us why we didn't get that grant that we wanted, I heard it was spent on some generators for a hospital down in Douglas, and it was, we, in the Town of Mills, we felt we were slighted there, but again, I don't think we got the SLIB on board soon enough. I have seen reports that the SLIB has money that they didn't spend, and I would look into why that wasn't spent, if they didn't prove to the SLIB that this was a good enough way to use that money, or if that town had already exceeded their limit, or if it was just simply they didn't cross their Ts and dot their Is properly. I hope that wasn't the case. I think Kim Reitmer and the Wyoming Business Council has tried to spend the money wisely and completely. I remember in one of the meetings, that we want to make sure the CARESAC money and all that money that is coming in now from the federal government is spent and not wasted and sent back.
Okay. Do you support or oppose Medicaid expansion?
Without looking at it very closely, I would say I oppose it.
Okay. Do you support Stand Your Ground and Castle Doctrine law?
Yes, I do.
What is your view on the creation of an income tax for the state of Wyoming, and where can the state look for the increase in revenue dollars, if not a new tax?
Charles Scott and both, both Jim Scott and Carl, or Charles Scott and Jim Anderson said last night, if we can pass the increase in taxes to travel industry and those coming from out of state, that's a good thing. To get back to your question, and would you rephrase it again, because I jumped off track?
In your view, what is, what are your views on the creation of a state income tax?
As long as the state tax were to be sent to the entities within the state that needed the most. As I was in that Zoom meeting with the Joint Highway Transportation and Military Affairs Committee, and they were talking about the $130 million deficit that YDOT faces each year, I was looking at some of the past funding for that, some of their funding gets diverted each year into other places, and I don't agree with that. If you're going to make a state tax, just like the 1% tax here in Endurock County, the additional, I think it should be every four years we vote on it, and every four years those tax dollars that shows exactly where that money is going. So if you're, if we create a state tax, it should be transparent, and everybody knows where that money is going and how it's being raised, and if it's being utilized for the most needy places within the state.
Okay. What are your thoughts about Governor Gordon and the five elected officials in the Occidental Land Purchase?
I don't know that much about it, but I hear it's unwise, and he's put all of his money in one basket and possibly counting his eggs before they're hatched. I do not know that much about it, I've heard that you should diversify and not put all your eggs in one basket.
Okay. What are your thought on charter schools, and do you believe that it's right for local governments, or local school districts to have the power of approval?
My family was one of the ones that not helped Norm Carroll start the first Casper Classical Academy, which was one of the first charter schools in town, which kind of started the busing and the school of choice within Casper. I disagree with that today. I think a lot of the school kids, there's no synergy, and every person, I think, wants And every person, I think, wants their child to go to a neighborhood school. But I don't think all schools were funded commensurately, which made some schools in town better than others. And that made the schools of choice seem like the thing to do. I think it's a eight or 10-hour daycare system now when it wasn't back in when I went to school. I went to school at 8:35 in the morning. I crossed CY Junior High School and went to Westwood. I came back at 3:30. My mom was home, or if she wasn't. We, the kids would play kick the can outside, and everybody went to the same school. Now you see pictures of kids at the bus park. They're all on their phones because that guy in front of me may live next to me, but I go to the school over there, but I don't even know him. And I think it's created division. And I think we see too much division within the state politically and economically. And it's throughout the entire United States and the world. We shouldn't have ever social distanced. We should have physically distanced, but never socially, because we're social animals. We should never have stepped away from being social. Talking to each other, nodding, smiling, communicating. You can't do that behind a mask. And you can't do it when I live next to a kid that I don't even know because he doesn't go to the same school and he doesn't come home till 5:30 because that's when the bus drops him off. His parents take him to a bus hub at 6:45. And, or he gets on a bus. I don't, I don't think, I want the schools to come back to normal. And the public school, if they're all funded properly and have the same curriculum, I don't completely agree with Common Core, but I would like to see the school district or school system come back to not charter schools.
Okay. Brooke, do you have a question?
No, hi, Brooke. Didn't see you down there.
Hi, Kevin. Good to see you here. I've been looking at the side of your face, so sorry about that. So one of the questions that I have for you is that 105 million that Chairman asked you about. So many, many years ago, when the state legislature did away with the sales tax on food, they agreed to allocate a certain amount of money. Most recently, I spent 105 million back to local governments, so cities and counties, as a replacement for that money that was collected on food tax. So obviously now we're looking for revenue diversification, and there's been a lot of discussion around putting back on the sales, the sales tax on food. And I would be curious if you support that or not.
I do, yes. I was, I answered a Wyoming Taxpayers Association flyer that came to my candidate box. And that was, I think that was one of them, or that was one of the questions that was asked somewhere. I agree that the 4% or the 5% here in Noddriff County put back on food is a good idea. I would, I would support that. If that's where the 105 million is coming from, I, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Thank you.
Yep. Was that the second part of that question? The food tax? With that 105 million? I, I agree with that. I would put, it doesn't affect, even with all six kids at the house, it doesn't really change my food bill that much. So I was surprised. I was a little bit surprised when it came in, and I don't have a problem with putting that back into effect. And I don't think 90% of the homeowners and families would oppose to that either.
Okay. Jim, do you want to ask that question?
Forrest asks his first, and then I'll follow.
Okay, uh-oh, got to go in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. O'Hern, there are many issues facing Noddriff County and the state. Putting the budgets aside, what do you, what issue or issues do you see as being most important currently?
The biggest issue is the pandemic right now and COVID-19 and getting people back to work. Whether it's, and it's throughout the whole world. I mean, and Noddriff County and Casper. You need shoes. You need a haircut. You need to buy, you know, I drove down to Denver last weekend. The roads are getting worse, but every person needs, you know, to have people back to work. Leah was in here earlier. Her spa was closed down for eight weeks. My wife cuts my hair, so that didn't affect me. I've gone out every day and inspected houses. So the COVID-19 hasn't affected me hardly at all. My wife thinks I'm way too cavalier about it. I've heard that I've got a better chance of getting hit by lightning than dying of COVID-19. We need to get people back to work. And the pandemic, I think, is the main thing to, putting the budget aside, getting everybody back to work, because everybody is essential.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
All righty. Are you aware of what PLT is, Payment in Lieu of Taxes?
Negative. Pelt?
Pelt.
No.
Payment in Lieu of Taxes. It's where we receive taxes because the federal government owns the property instead of receiving taxes from individuals. We get it from, through the state in a big lump sum, and then it's divvied out.
Okay.
So basically, kind of running with that explanation, what would be the pros and cons for the state and counties? Or any problems with that? What are your thoughts on it? How, I kind of just gave you a quick brief. You don't have to answer. I mean, if you don't, it's kind of hard to answer.
Well, I talked to some hunters the other day, and they're excluded from crossing private land to go to federal and state land. And I assume that's where we get payment in lieu of taxes?
No, it's the actual ownership of, federal ownership of property.
Okay.
Because they own it, we don't get taxes from it.
Okay, okay.
Based on royalties on federal ground.
Okay.
Because they're federal ground, we don't get the royalties anymore. If it was needed ground, the state gets the royalty.
Okay.
So it's.
Depends on how that federal land was used, I guess.
Yeah, it's not really fair to ask if, since you don't know, so it's, it's fine.
You'll know it if you go there.
I'm a contractor guy. I swing a hammer and I own land up on the mountain, but no, no close, no, okay, yeah, don't know.
Thank you.
You bet.
Brooke, you had one, didn't you?
Brooke?
Yeah, Kevin, so I'm not sure what, what your intentions are. Obviously, I know you in your role at the Town of Mills, so you have a full-time job. I think working or being down at the legislature in Cheyenne feels like probably a full-time job. I know you're married and you've got a number of kids, and I, your wife is great. So I'm curious, in your mind, how do you think you're going to balance all of this?
I can walk and chew gum. I used to be a bartender when I was, when my folks owned a liquor store. When I turned 19, I built the bar downstairs, and my dad said, you don't own a bar, a bar owns you. And I've always worked two or three jobs at a time. My wife thinks I'm a workaholic. And I only get about six hours of sleep every night because I'm always doing something. I said in my resume or my CV that I sent to Chairman Henry and the rest of you, if I'm not skiing or playing with grandkids, I am building something. I've built quite a few things around town. I even rebuilt the barracks in Tikrit, Iraq when we were there because I cannot sit down for, we were at a picnic one time, and the people around me were starting to look funny at me and were kind of, and I go, what are you doing? You have not, you've sat down for 217 seconds is the most you've sat down in the last whole weekend. I do not sit well. I'm always up doing something. I will not have a hard time serving in Cheyenne. I was gone for 15 months in 2003 and 2004. And like you said, Brooke, my wife is exceptional. She took care of all six kids. And we talked more while I was gone because I ran every morning at 3:45. The berm was seven miles long inside the perimeter. I would then go in at 5:15. It was 8:15 Casper time, and we had talked for 45 minutes before I'd walk to Chow Hall at 6 o'clock. So I can, I can, I want to do it. And I, I can, I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any, any kind of a follow-up statement or prepared to something that we didn't ask you? Just kind of a closing statement?
Well, I think I started, Paul, did you have something, or Jim?
I don't know, Brooke's waving.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I think we skipped a pretty critical question that Paul's been asking.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. I think we did.
Obviously, in three weeks, the voters are going to make a choice.
Yep.
So we're left with the decision of trying to pick who we think the voters are going to pick, which, you know, we'll, we'll have our own opinion. But I just have, would like to get some sense of what you've done to campaign to reach out to the voters right now regarding the primary coming up.
Okay. Us three were talking about that before. You guys will make a decision that will change one of our lives for five months. In three weeks, the voters will decide who's going to change our lives for two years. I've been out walking in the campaign after church last weekend. Mike Lovlett, I don't know if you guys know, he's a CPA here in town. He goes, let me see the bottom of your shoes. If you don't wear out two pairs of shoes, you're not campaigning properly. Somebody said, oh, you're doing it old school. I've got a sign on the back of my truck. Maybe somebody, some of you guys have seen it. I'm driving around doing old school stuff. I put on gloves. I go up to the doorknob. I put a flyer on every registered Republican in my House District 59. I've been to 85% of all the streets. I have not walked Sam Howell and the ones out by Dempsey Acres, but I have walked 85% of all the others. I put a flyer on their door. I ring the doorbell, back up 10 feet. Some people wave, some people, you know, hi, I'm running for House District 59. I think I'm the only one walking the district, walking around, meeting people, talking to them. I've met a lot of people, and they said, you've got my vote because you're the only one that's come around. I've been to a couple places, and one guy said, nobody has ever come to my house. And he's on, he was in Kit Carson, I think. He goes, nobody's ever come down here and put a flyer on my door. Thank you. I give everybody an opportunity to ask me questions. I said, there's six bullets on there. I'm pro-life Christian, NRA member, Second Amendment, business owner, public servant for the last eight years. I've worked for both the City of Casper and the Housing and Community Development Branch. I used to write all the non, bid specs for the nonprofits and the low income. So I've worked with both the City of Casper and the Town of Mills. Worked with some of you. I worked with Brooke on the Eclipse board in 2017, walked around a little bit with Brooke, making sure everybody knew that there was an eclipse. Remember what Maverick said, Brooke? I don't think we're going to play. Well, then you're going to have to close your doors for two or three weeks because there's going to be a lot of people in town. And yeah, it's going to affect you whether you want it or not. I hope, I hope you guys changed my life tonight for five months, and I hope the voters. I think I've, I, I've been around a long time. I've lived in town since 1964. We moved here in 63. We stopped to build a garage for my uncle on Connie Street in Mills. Looking back, I think he pulled one nail for every two that my dad drove to keep us around. At the end of August, my mom said, we move to Redding, California, where we were heading, or we stay. We stayed, and I'm very glad. Especially glad coming back from Denver last weekend. This is the best place to spend COVID-19 in the world. We always physically distance. I'm a very social guy. That is, I haven't, that hasn't changed my life a little bit, but my wife and kids, and I'm very concerned about the school kids. 500,000 masks for the people of Wyoming so the kids can go back to school if they socially distance inside. And I want to get back to, there's not a new normal. I want to go back to the old normal. I was in Aberdeen Proving Ground in September 11th, 2001, and I saw the world change that day, and I hope I never see that again. I was staying three miles from where the Pentagon was in Rockville, Maryland. Been around the block, can chew gum and walk at the same time. Six kids, three grandkids, and I want to do it.
Okay.
I hope you guys, I would appreciate your approval and appointment.
All right.
That it?
Yes. Any other? Okay, thank you very much for coming. Thanks for putting your name in. All right, now, we had it set up to go down and, and talk it over a little bit amongst ourselves, and then we'll come up here or we'll stay down there? Come up here. Yeah, then we'll put that decision on the YouTube also, okay? All right, we'll adjourn for just a little bit. Thank you. Yes. Okay, is there a motion to go into exact?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. You, you agree with that, Brooke? All right, thumbs up. Thank you. Now, we're going to go down and get Brooke on the phone, is that right? Down in our other room.
And then we'll be back up here at 5:30?
Yes. Back up here with your decision, YouTube will continue, and then I'll bring it over.
So we're going to do the decision at 5:30?
No.
No, just right after we decide.
We're going to decide and then come back up.
On the YouTube, can you pause it? How do you do that? On the YouTube, can you pause it? How do you do that?
She isn't on Zoom though this time.
You guys are still on YouTube?
Yeah, okay.
We're on YouTube.
Gotta be. Thanks for the reminder. Okay, the three candidates are here too, good. All right, I'll open it up for, Brooke, are you here?
Yep.
Can you hear us, Brooke?
She's right there. She's right there.
Unmute it. Can you hear us?
No, she can't.
No. Now she can. Can you hear us now?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, we are back in our deliberation of House District 59. Is there any discussion?
Do we want to go right straight to nomination?
Let's talk about it a little bit, maybe. Or whatever, what's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion?
Brooke, do you want to make the motion, or?
Yeah, yeah, so I was just waiting to see if you guys wanted to do discussion or not. So Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to appoint Kevin O'Hern for the interposition in House District 59.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start.
Okay.
So I just, I've been through this process recently, I know Commissioner Bertollio has as well. It takes a lot of courage to do this, but more importantly, it takes a lot of courage to raise your hand and run for this seat. And I think one of you said it very elegantly, you know, we're appointing for five months, the position that you're really speaking with the voters is for two years. So I, the reason that I'm supporting Kevin for the seat, I support all of you, you each have a unique skillset. I'm, Kevin's got a lot of municipal experience and some background and some things that I think will be helpful as we're in this interim process. But truthfully, each of you, I was blown away in your interviews by what you know about the things that you have specifically in your background. So please know, this is not a great place to be for any of us. But that's right now where we are, and I wish all of you the very best of luck during the primary. And I look forward to the voters actually having their say in this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Anyone else? Yeah. Commissioner Bertollio.
Are these on? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To all three of you, the voters are going to have a very difficult choice. And we did too. Each one of you brings some very unique skillsets. And whoever the voters end up picking, they're not going to have, be disappointed. Kevin has, as Brooke said, Commissioner Kaufman said, has a little more government background. I don't know if that's going to play well with the voters or not play well with the voters, but for us, you had a little bit more understanding of the challenges. To Mr. Carpenter and Ms. Juarez, I think you have some great ideas. And don't give up your passion, even if you don't win the primary, stick around. If you want to get involved with local government, we have boards, we'd love to get you into, to get you more involved in the public process. I think both of you have great opportunities as, in the future, whether it's down at the legislature or in local government, wherever you are. I think your passions are outstanding, you bring great ideas. Regardless of what this vote is, because really this vote doesn't mean much. Stay after, stay after it and let, we're going to let, really let the voters decide in three weeks. Because they're really the ones that should be making this decision and not us, so. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nick? Jim? Mr. Commissioner Mill?
Whatever. All three of you, each and every one of you, keep after it, don't give up, keep going. I commend you for going through this process, for even this short-term thing. But remember the end game, that's the election. Keep going after it. But each one of you brought forward good points, good aspects. Y'all are upstanding citizens, thank you very much for putting your names forward and stepping up. Not many people do it, so hold your head up.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you, all three of you. I spent many days pondering over how I would come down on this, finding out, asking people about you and what they knew about you as individuals. You know, two of you, I know from my other dealings. So I was at my wit's end coming into today. And I didn't get helped a lot because the disparities between you were pretty minute. And again, as has already been said, the voters will choose here in just a mere three weeks. But thank you to all of you. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. As far as I'm concerned, I want to thank you too for putting your name in. And you've gone through, I said at the Republican selection that we were going to put you on the hot seat, and we asked you about 12 questions and not three. So you were, and it's a learning experience for you as well as us. So thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. And the voters, the 18th, they're going to choose, so this election isn't over. We made kind of a choice, but it's the voters that count. So keep in there and keep on the campaign trail, all of you. And we do have lots of boards and commissions that, whatever the outcome of the election, we'd like to talk to you about some of those also. So thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor to appoint Kevin O'Hern. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Mr. O'Hern, thank you very much.
We all know about health now, because David looked it up.
Okay, okay, tell us, tell us about it.
Well, we appreciate that, and we, you know, we thought down there, we kind of talked about that, and we didn't expect any less, so. And don't worry about it. There was, there wasn't a right answer in the whole room, so you guys did a good job, really, thank you.
And so that you know, that's, let's see, in last fiscal year, we get that check on June 30th typically. It comes from the federal government, straight to the county, $3.8 million, so it's a big deal.
It's a big deal, huge deal for Natrona County.
It's huge in the county's budget. And what it is for and how it is figured is on population. And it's for those federal lands that are within the county. We are roughly 49% federal lands in this county. So it's done on a formula by population and by the amount of federal acreage that we have.
Production, yeah.
So we are, as you notice, as you drive out through the county, on county roads, you never know when you're on private or BLM or Forest Service, you don't know that, only we know that. Well, those roads are maintained by us. So this is the federal government's way of paying their share of taxes, which doesn't come to anywhere near what the taxes would, or what those lands would generate, were they in private hands. That's been one of the big arguments for years and years and years. Decades since the Sagebrush Rebellion. That was a big issue, because these lands are not being taxed, yet we have to maintain the lands on them. Roughly within, just the Casper, just the Casper BLM district, which is Natrona, Converse, Nia Brera counties, 70% of the leases, so those would be grazing leases, mineral leases, whatever the BLM has leased out for, 70% of those leases are dependent upon county roads for access. So that's what that $3.8 million comes to us for. Yes, it would be roughly triple that if it were in private hands, but at least, at least it helps us take care of some of those issues. Plus, we have to provide law enforcement. For instance, you may remember the incident in Sublet County where, let's see, it was at the time Secretary Udall, his brother got lost in Sublet County. That cost Sublet County nearly $3 million out of their own pocket, and he was lost on federal lands. That Sublet County just had to bear that cost. Now, Natrona County gets the largest check in the state, so yay.
On the 105 million for cities, towns, and counties, that is figured on a formula. And it takes in population, it takes in the depressed counties, there's a formula there, part of that. And they call it the Madden Formula, and it's pretty, sales tax receipts, it goes into all kinds of things. And they call it the Madden Formula, and it's pretty, sales tax receipts, it goes into all kinds of things. But that formula is pretty, pretty good to keep intact because it takes a lot of those figures and factors in. But the 105 itself can go anywhere. It's been 180,000 before, it's been down to the 90s. But this 105's been there for several years. We made the deal when I was president of the WCCA, we went into the back room and made the deals at 112 million. And when we came out, it ended up 105, but yay, you know. Sometimes they don't have control of that deal down there. But we're glad to get whatever we can get, and it helps all of the cities and towns and counties, so. Well, thank you very much. Is there a motion to go into exec?
So moved.
So moved, second.
For the purposes of litigation or updates? Yeah, all right.